Thank you again. Good morning, I'm Councilman Robert Stokes, Chair Education, Workforce and Youth Committee. Also in attendance and committee members are Councilwoman Felicia Porter from the 10th District. Councilwoman? See, she's on, okay. Councilman Torrance from the 7th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Antonio Glover from the 13th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to Councilwoman Porter, I've seen her name.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, good, good. Also Nikki Thompson from Council President Mosby's office.
And the committee staff person is Marguerite Kern.
Make sure I didn't have... Nina Themnas from the Mayor's Office.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And then Councilman Cohen from the 1st District, who is a committee member also.
Sir.
And Councilman Bullock from the 9th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Before we start, I'm asking all speakers and panelists to mute yourself when you are not speaking. Identify yourself before you speak. Speak slowly and clearly. And after you have finished speaking, please mute yourself again until you are asked to speak again. On the agenda today, first we will hold a work session for Council Bill 21-0039, Local Hiring Employment Plan. For the purpose of requiring certain contractors to create and submit to the Director of Finance Initial Employment Plans to bid on government assisted construction projects or contracts that receive government assistance totaling $5 million or more. Requiring the Department of Finance, Director of Department of Finance to score the bids using the Director's evaluation of employment plan as 10% of a bidder's score. Requiring the winning bidder to submit a revised employment plan to the Director of Department of Finance with certain criteria and performing related provisions. Following the work session, we will hold a hearing on Council Resolution 21-0011R in a formal hearing, Financial Literacy Curriculum Within the Baltimore City Public Schools. The committee had a hearing on April 15, 2021, for Council Bill 21-0039 and recessed so we could hold this work session to discuss any proposed amendments and to resolve any concerns regarding the legislation as currently written. First, I'd like to get committee reports and any amendments. And first up would be the Law Department. Is anybody here from the Law Department? I don't see any. Next, we'll have Nikki Thompson from Council President Mosby's office.
Good morning. So I will go through the Council President's amendments, which are just a combination of amendments from the Law Department and from the various agencies that were mentioned during the hearing and submitted with testimony. So I won't go too deep into the Law Department's amendments, they're mostly technical. I will leave that for if someone is able to jump on. And that specifically will mostly Amendment Number 2. But our First Amendment, which came from Department of Finance, was to replace the Department of Finance and the Director of the Department of Finance with the Office of MoED. And so that's the First Amendment. We've stricken Department of Finance from all instances in the bill and replaced it with MoED. But Department of Finance did raise to us that there's a particular instance where we did a striking, just wanting to follow through with the striking of MoED, striking of DOF and adding in MoED. It might be on page 25, I think. Maybe sure. And if Mara would like to jump in and provide more clarity on why a striking this might run us afoul of some of our authority with BOE, that's totally fine. And if we need to make that correction, that's fine as well. Mara, did you want to say anything before I move on to the next amendment?
Sure, thank you. Mara James, Legislative Engagement Lead for the Department of Finance. So the section, in terms of the amendments, I believe it's on page 2, and I'm just trying to pull them up, apologies. But what it, there's a section that requires that in the current drafting, that the Director of Finance would have the pre initial employment plan count as 10% of the bid for scoring. And addressing bids and scoring with that is a specific function of procurement. Just to note whether or not that is presumes or not. And so we wanted to raise that that would, transferring that to MoED didn't really align with their role in the procurement process necessarily in terms of understanding like the validity of the plan and the content of it. That would work, but in terms of actually the 10% portion of the procurement and whether or not they meet that standard, that's something that would fall within the procurement, the opposite procurement in the Department of Finance.
Thank you, Mara. And yes, page 2, line 25, not page 25. It was not 25 pages long. So yes, that was our First Amendment. And thank you to the Department of Finance for providing your expertise there. Onto our Second Amendment, which is from the Law Department, providing general clarity and reference to other requirements that already exist from Article 5. On page 2, it strikes line 18 to through 23 in their entiities and substitutes the language with a bidder responding to a solicitation that qualifies them as a beneficiary. Of this article must include in their bid or proposal an initial employment plan outlining the bidder's strategy to, and then it goes into our existing local hiring requirements and then adds the additional requirements that we are asking for within this legislation. And I know that was also a concern for MoED, making sure that we weren't completely replacing the existing requirements, but adding additions to. And the Law Department suggested that this was clearer language, and that is Amendment Number 2. And our last amendment, Amendment Number 3, is specifically addressing the piece of health and retirement benefits for employees. It was mentioned in the hearing that that might be difficult to collect and/or evaluate. Just totally understandable. And so this particular part we're striking, beginning with work in line 30 down through and including contracts in line 31, and we're substituting it with who will be employed on the project. And then we're adding in some of the additional data points that MoED mentioned that are more measurable. Description of past compliance, ensuring that they're developing a strategy in conjunction with MoED staff for both Baltimore City Schools, Baltimore City Public Charter Schools, et cetera, et cetera. And also in developing their strategies for training programs and training opportunities. Any questions or any comments before I move on to the last amendment?
I'm sorry, Nikki, on Amendment 3, that the Law Department should be Amendment Number 4?
The Law Department's amendment is Amendment Number 2.
Ah, okay. I was trying to be clear on that, okay.
No problem. And then finally, in the rest of Amendment Number 3, we are also taking the amendment from our agency, our expert agency. And we are striking the revised employment plan and removing the requirements from the revised employment plan into required monthly reports that MoED already provides and does meetings and internal processes for. So making this fit into what we currently do, which makes total sense, especially when it comes to implementation. One specific note is that on page 3 and line 11, after contract, we inserted, "Within two weeks of receiving a notice to proceed from the awarding agency." It's a better metric, and also thank you again to MoED for providing that to us. And then also, I want to note on line 20, we're striking 13 and substituting 6. And on that same page and that same line, we're striking a strategy to ensure that, which is similar language from the prior laws. But we're substituting that with the minutes of at least one meeting the bidder had with MoED staff during which MoED staff and the bidder worked together to ensure, et cetera, et cetera, that these criteria are being met. And then finally, in ongoing reports, since we are striking the revised plan and we are going to be instituting ongoing monthly reporting, this is the criteria that MoED has suggested for that monthly reporting. And those are Council President's amendments.
Hey, Ms. Thompson, real quick, I'm looking at, because you have Amendment 3 on here twice.
Yes, I think that was just a drafting mistake. And we caught it earlier. Yeah, we weren't just able, we just weren't able to get it in time before the hearing.
Okay, I want to go back to, I see Mr. Pichot is back on here. I want to go back to Amendment Number 2, which is the Law Department's amendment?
Yes, I can't, I don't have that in front of me. I had trouble bringing it up to anybody. Can anybody shoot me a copy? My computer's acting so weird this morning.
I can send it to you, Elena.
Okay, you can shoot it to me real quick, and I can have it up and look at it. I looked at it yesterday, but I don't want to go on memory. Not my strong point. I think the work they just done...
Just sent it, Elena.
Excuse me?
I was just letting you know I just sent them to you.
There we go. Thank you very much.
I'll call them.
Okay, and my computer was just, I couldn't find anything this morning. Okay, so as I recall, while they're still coming up here. Okay. I got some from Mara just now, but, oh, there's yours, Nikki, okay. Nikki, did you already correct the one thing that I had suggested in the wording of the... Oh, yeah, you already did. You did all the places where Director of Finance, you replaced it with MoED.
But we did have a question about line 25 that Mara just raised. We noticed that there is a striking on line 25 on page 2. And we just wanted to make sure that that particular striking doesn't run us afoul of any of our...
Okay, so what page on line 2?
Page 2, line 25.
And you are striking which part?
It strikes the Director of Finance. Strikes the Director of Finance or places it with MoED in regards to bidding and the...
Initial employment plan submission must be evaluated and scored by the Director based on the two. And that you're changing that to MoED? I mean, I don't think that really fixes my problem with it. In that... What did I suggest? I know, my amendments are not coming up for some reason, I think they didn't...
I think your suggestion was the beneficiary language.
Yeah, I'm just gonna have to try to get my amendments up here. Can you, you want to move on to something else and then come back to me in a second?
Yes, we can, we can do that. See, Mr. Jason. Mayor's Employment Development, Mr. Jason Cohen. Do you have any comments or amendments or concerns?
Thank you, Chairman Stokes and members of the committee. I'll be very brief. I am, again, just for the record, my name is Jason Perkins Cohen. I'm the Director of the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, or MoED is the acronym. I'm joined today by Mackenzie Garvin, who's the agency's Chief of Staff, and John Ford, who runs much of our local hiring and generally just fantastic analyst. Again, I just want to thank, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you and the members of the committee and the staff, working closely with Nikki and others to help put these amendments together. We, as an agency that works tirelessly every day to help city residents get jobs, hopefully it's obvious that we are strongly supportive of local hiring, the concept of local hiring, and any and all amendments that we would offer are always in, with the philosophy of making it more open to city residents and making it something that we, the city, and MoED in particular, can implement successfully for city residents. So we're really grateful for the amendments. We have a few amendments from our previous session that we had suggested that have not been implemented yet. We understand that some of them require some further discussion with the Legal Department and others. And just look forward to those conversations to do whatever we can do to, again, to make the new law as strong as we can and as good for city residents as possible. But these are not new amendments, they're the same things we talked about previously that you all already have. And again, grateful for the partnership. Because it is really, what we hope is really is a partnership with the City Council President's Office and each of you as well.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Ms. Marva James, do you have any additional comments from Department of Finance?
No, sorry, thank you.
Hey, Mrs. Pichot. First of all, let me recognize Councilwoman Sharon Miller from the 6th District, who is a member of this committee, and also Max Statman from Council President's Office.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Pichot, are you...
Give me one second, and I will be able to answer your question. Just freeing up my report, because I think it's in my report. Everything is taking twice as long today for some reason. I celebrated too early. So... Nikki, did you add criteria in paragraph 3 that's different from what's there now?
Paragraph 3.
So if you look at, when you were talking about this line 25, it'll be evaluated and scored based on the criteria listed in paragraph 3 of this subsection. And paragraph 3 just talks about providing a detailed description.
Oh, for economically disadvantaged individual?
Right, so is there anything else that was added by your amendments to that?
No.
Okay. All right, so what I said about that, and I guess it holds true also for the MoED, should MoED be replaced with the Director, is that it doesn't, there's no, it's not really criteria, there's no discretion involved here. They've either submitted their detailed description or they haven't. And so if that's the way you're going to score it, then I'm fine with it. But if there's going to be any discretion as to the, you know, the quality of that submission, then it might, then it would be a little bit different issue. But when I talked to you before, you had said it was just really going to be based on whether or not they submitted a detailed plan or not.
Yes, and we also, based off of MoED's previous testimony, wanted to make sure that they weren't burdened with additional evaluative, you know, requirements that they weren't able to meet either.
So if that's all, if that remains true, then I do not have an issue with replacing the Director with MoED in that particular part of the bill.
Okay, thank you so much.
I don't think, I think my other amendments were incorporated for, a lot of them, into what was already provided by the Council, the President's memo. Or President's amendments, I'm sorry. With that...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pichot. I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, if something else comes up, I will chime in.
Okay, thank you. Now we're gonna go to committee members, and we're gonna start off with Councilwoman Sharon Miller from the 6th District. If you have any comments or questions.
No questions at this time, no questions, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Felicia Porter from the 10th District?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I don't have any questions at this time. I look forward to hearing more of the recommendations from this work session moving forward. Thank you.
Councilman Torrance from the 7th District, any questions or concerns?
No, sir, no questions at this time.
Councilman Glover, any questions or concerns? Councilman Glover? Councilman Zeke Cohen from the 1st District, any comments or concerns?
No, I'm all set, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Bullock, any questions or concerns from the 9th District?
Nothing here, Mr. Chair, thank you.
We'll go back to Councilman Glover. Mr. Glover, Councilman Glover, are you still there? I'm gonna make a suggestion. We just vote on these, these four amendments, and then if we get any additional amendments, we could bring them before the next City Council meeting.
Councilman?
I'm sorry, Mr. Pichot.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't get my chat handle to go up. I just reviewed my amendments, and I guess there are some technical ones that aren't necessarily covered by the President's amendment. So we would appreciate that our amendments be considered as well.
They should be, so let me know which ones aren't, because that was our intention. So let's make sure we get with...
I was real cursory look there, so I'll look more closely.
No, no problem, no problem. They should be, so that's totally fine.
Okay, so then if that's the case, I'm good.
Can we do a floor amendment, and we just vote these out today?
Yes.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, I had a quick question. So if we vote these amendments out today, you're talking about bringing any additional amendments to this at a City Council meeting? Will the, my only concern is that we won't be able to workshop any additional meetings back into committee to talk through them with the agencies. So is that what you were, I just want to make sure I'm tracking?
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and recess the hearing. If that sounds like that would be more better, we just recessed the hearing. But I would just want to vote these actually out now.
Okay.
Just these four amendments and then recess the hearing, so we can address some of your concerns.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. We can, I'll follow your lead, sir.
Mr. Chair, if I may add, we don't have, I doubt that there'll be an amendment that will, that the, that MoED would offer that we would be opposed to. The ones that we haven't offered is because we're still figuring out the legalities and what we can do and can't do. So we're not opposed to any of the amendments. So whatever would be offered as a floor amendment would likely be what both MoED and Council President's Office and the Law Department have agreed on. We've all been in close conversation with this topic and are all in agreement that this is something that should be done and that we can get it done. So I can't, and I won't speak for the agencies, but that's just, you know, an additional point.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Thompson, for that clarification, thank you.
So Ms. Thompson, you think we should just go ahead and vote on, we don't have to recess? That's what you're saying?
I do think we should have an additional floor amendment, but I'm fine with moving these amendments. If the agencies are fine with moving these amendments to have these done. I scared it not from MoED, but I wasn't, I'm not sure.
Well, the committee will now vote, do we have, we have a public testimony? Okay, okay. The committee will vote now on the proposed four amendments?
Mr. Chair, I apologize, quick point of order. Could you just repeat one time, just so I'm totally clear on the four amendments? Just between the agencies, got a little confused. Could you repeat them one more time?
Nikki, can you repeat, Nikki, can you go ahead and repeat them, please?
Yeah, no problem. So the First Amendment is replacing the instances of the Director of Department of Finance with MoED as the acting agency that will implement this legislation. The second is from the Law Department for general clarity and mostly technical. Number three is pretty substantive, because it is clarifying that the type of the description needed for health and retirement benefits. And it's also in stating that strategies need to be developed in conjunction with MoED staff. Those were not previous instances. And then number, that was not in previous instances. So we're including developed in conjunction with MoED staff in Amendment Number 3. And then number four is striking the revised employment plan and then moving the requirements from the revised employment plan to the already existing required monthly reports that MoED does and includes a change in notification to insert, "Within two weeks of receiving a notice to proceed from the awarding agency," and also requiring minutes from their meetings with the MoED staff. And then describes what the ongoing reports should, what data it should include.
Appreciate that, and do we have these in writing?
If council has not seen them, we can, in writing, we don't have to vote these today. I was unaware of that. My apologies.
I might be wrong on that, I'm just looking around, maybe Marguerite sent them, but I'll see them if anyone else has them.
They're pretty substantive, so I would like for...
Excuse me, Councilman Cohen. I received the amendments while we were in the meeting. There are copies available. Nikki, could you forward to the committee members?
Most definitely.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And, Mr. Chair, if we could, just get a minute or two to read them once they hit our inbox. Just want to...
Sure, no problem.
Thank you, sir.
Just making sure I've got everyone's emails on here, one, something.
Mr. Chair, would it be possible, just to confirm with Elena, I just wanted to check out this amendment, Amendment 1, and the impact for our understanding in finance about what this would do for page 2?
Is that the line twenty-five question?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
My understanding is just that the bid scoring is what happens in procurement, and that Moed would not have that.
But, but they're, they're scoring for, well. I don't, that's, that's an interesting question, but I don't know that that is a requirement, that only purchasing or only procurement would do that, but my point was that no matter who does it, it's really not scoring anything, it's just saying whether or not a detailed description of the bidder's efforts to hire retain, you know, the local workforce was provided. Not, not the quality or the, or the contents of that description wouldn't be evaluated. It would just be whether it's there or not, that's my, that's my understanding of what the sponsor intended.
Hey, real quick, I see Mara James from Finance had her hand up.
Yeah, I was just discussing with Elena, the question about scoring.
It could be.
Because that, that is what procurement currently does, is reviews bids and checks if something has been submitted or not.
Yeah, I'm trying to think if that's stat, if, if, if that's a statutory duty of procurement, I haven't, I don't think so. Something I'd have to look up, though. I, I don't recall that being spelled out anywhere in the Charter or the code. It might be in the procurement regs that were just, you know, adopted. But we definitely could recast that section to be clear about exactly what is expected, so it doesn't necessarily wouldn't impinge on, on the procurement's job of evaluating. I think the evaluating is being used in two different ways there, but we could clarify if it was okay with the sponsor and, and the President's Office.
Thank you.
Ms. Petro, could, could you, what amendment are you actually talking about?
We're actually not talking, well, we're talking about the change in, on page two, line twenty-five. It changes from, the changes from the Director to Moed, who, as the one who would evaluate the criteria in, in the next pair, in, in the paragraph that follows this. And determine, if they, if whoever the evaluator is says that that has been satisfied, then there is a ten percent overall score bump, I guess. But the only thing that has to be done, there's really no evaluation going on, it's just whether, whether or not paragraph three that's over on the next page is a detailed description of the bidder's efforts to hire retain at least fifty percent of the total workforce locally, or of, as economically disadvantaged, socially disadvantaged, or both. All they have to do is put a description in about how they're going to do that, what their efforts are, and so I didn't think it was really much of an evaluation that had to take place there, so that's why I said it was okay. But if you would rather the language be changed to call it something else, that's okay, too.
I think the issue for finance is just the fact of using the scoring.
Right, right, I see, I understand what you're saying. I don't really think any, there's any scoring that's going to actually happen here, if they have it, they get the ten percent and that's it.
Yeah.
But, but it's a little convoluted way of saying it, I agree. So I'm happy to try to revise that if, if the President's Office would like me to.
We welcome any clarity there, that would be wonderful.
Happy to do that, I'll shoot it to you after, right after the meeting.
Councilman Cohen, is that any, did that address some of your?
Yeah, just, just, just reading through this more substantive one, just trying to totally wrap my mind around it.
Why are you doing that, Councilman, Councilman Torrance, I know you had your hand up. Councilman Torrance?
The mute button is not working, this isn't working, no, I was just, this is for Mr. Petro, I just wanted to make sure that like, these amendments do, do satisfy, ensuring that we don't have that constitutional concern that you had from the last meeting, I just wanted to make sure. In terms of like the economic disadvantage.
Yes, I, I'm, I'm satisfied that that's part is, is, is okay.
I just wanted to make sure, because I'm reading through it now, I just wanted to make sure that we definitely didn't define it, but we also were clear about, it's not, it's just the fact that you specify in that we're evaluating based off of it, okay.
No, nothing has changed with the fact that it's still only socially, economically disadvantaged, and that's not a suspect class, so they, there only needs to be a rational basis to justify the disparate treatment, so I don't see a problem with that, I think.
Perfect, we need the equal protection clause, I just want to make sure.
We're good, thank you, that, that's a good question.
Okay, I have a suggestion to the committee, do we want to vote these out? Four amendments or work on another, have another work session? Because I want to make sure all the committee members are clear.
Quick, quick point of clarity. Mr. Chair, so if we were to vote the amendments, would we also then vote out the bill, or would we just vote the amendments and then come back and redetermine based on whatever Elena or, or anyone else also has? So, in other words, the question is, are we, if we were to vote amendments, are we just voting amendments but not the bill, or are we voting the whole thing?
Good, good question, Council, we'll vote the amendments and then we'll hold up and vote the bill out, about that.
Okay, that, that works for me.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm with the, I just want to clarify the point there, that I guess there are a few other amendments, as Nikki indicated earlier, that would, I guess, have to be on second reader to move forward, because they will not be included in this action of, of the committee today.
Ms. Petro, we're gonna vote these, come back and have another work session.
Got it, that's perfect.
Okay. All right, now, the committee will vote on proposed amendments one through four, is there a motion to vote on proposed amendments one through four?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Councilwoman Porter, is there a second?
Second. Council, Councilman Cohen can take it.
Second by Councilman Cohen. Councilman Stokes says a yes, Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilman Glover? Councilman Glover? Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton, yes, Councilwoman Porter?
Yes, sir.
Say yes, Councilman Torrance?
Aye.
Okay, so we have six yes, and I don't know what happened, Councilman Glover, I still see him on here, let me see. Councilman Glover, are you still here? I'm sorry, I'm, Councilman Glover will be absent, it can be five yes and two nays. The work session is recessed, well, is recessed to be reconvened at a late, later date. So. The motion passed.
I'm sorry, point of clarity, Mr. Chair, you said two nays?
It should have been more.
One nay.
Or is it one?
Can you hear me?
Oh, there he, okay.
Mr. Chair, can you hear me, it's going in and out, it's Councilman Glover, can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes, we hear you. We, we vote on the, the proposed amendments, we're trying to get your vote.
Yes.
Okay, so yes. Okay, that's seven yeses on the, the floor amendments. And again, the work session is recessed and be, to be convened at a later date.